I would like to call this village board meeting of Thursday, March 2nd, 2023 to order. Will the clerk please take the role?
Coker?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Here.
Siddiqui?
Here.
Light?
Here.
Meritato?
Here.
Pojak?
Here.
Schroeder?
Yeah, here.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, interregional, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the first place.
We now move to community announcement. Mr. Schmidt, please.
The next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be this Saturday, March 4th, at the Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village board or the village president, please call the village president's office anytime at 630-909-5302. The Glendale Heights Police Department, along with numerous other police departments across the country, have seen an uptick in people posting messages online and on social media instead of calling 911. These platforms are not monitored 24/7, and in times of emergency, every second counts. Please remember that the Glendale Heights Police Department cannot take a crime report over social media. In order to make a report, please contact the non-emergency number at 630-260-6070. If you need immediate assistance or have an emergency, please remember to always call 911 and don't rely on social media. Thank you.
You're welcome. Press Siddiqui.
With the spring season right around the corner, the village of Glendale Heights would like to remind residents that many projects in and around the house may require a permit. Common projects needing a permit include work on decks, sheds, patios, residing of your house, and re-roofing. For a complete list of projects requiring a permit, please visit We would like, also like to remind you not to pay your contractor until they contact Community Development to ensure all work is up to code. If you are not sure if your project requires a permit, or if you need to apply for one, please contact the Community Development Department at 630-260-6030.
Press Sealight, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Join us for the annual Safety Town Easter egg hunt hosted by the Glendale Heights Police Department. Children's ages eight and under are invited to join us on Saturday, April 1st, from 8:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. for our annual egg hunt. Pre-registration for time slots is required and is available on the village website. For more information on Safety Town Easter egg hunt and to pre-register, please visit www.glandalehighs.org or contact Tanya Mako at 630-909-5459. Join us Saturday, April 1st, from 8:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Center for Senior Citizens for our annual breakfast with the Easter Bunny. All-you-can-eat pancake breakfast will be served and includes sausage and beverage. Photos with the Easter Bunny will also be available. No pre-registration is required, and the event fee is paid at the door. Adult breakfast costs $5, children's breakfast $3, and pictures are $2. For more information, call 630-260-6060. And remember, your favorite trustees will be there making your fantastic pancakes, and I get the big grill because Chester retired. Thank you.
Better not screw up either.
Clerk Schmidt, please.
The village of Glendale Heights has launched a new online records request system. The system, powered by GovQA, provides an efficient process for managing requests from residents and the media for public records in accordance with the Illinois Freedom of Information Act, or FOIA. It also reduces paperwork and allows residents to track the requests online. For more information or to submit a request online, please visit the village's transparency page on our website at www.glandalehighs.org or call 630-260-6000. Daylight savings time begins Sunday, March 12th at 2:00 a.m. Please remember to turn your clocks forward one hour. Also during this time, please remember to change the batteries in all of your smoke and carbon monoxide detectors when you change your clocks. Thank you.
You're welcome. Press Sealight, Meritato.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Registered by March 6th for the 2023 Glendale Heights Youth Baseball and Softball Season. We offer a variety of programs for youth between the ages of five and 14, ranging from T-ball to Pony League. Teams' practice begin in early April through June, with a postseason tournament in July. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060 or visit www.GHREC.org. The police department would like to remind residents that a parking regulations within the village during snowfalls. There is no parking allowed on a village street designated as a snow route for 24 hours after a snowfall of one or more inches. There is no parking allowed on any village street for 24 hours after a snowfall of two inches or more. There is no parking allowed on any street for 72 hours after a snowfall of five inches or more. If you have any questions regarding within winter parking restrictions, please contact Glendale Heights Police Department, non-emergency number, at 630-260-6070. And what are we supposed to get, about four or five inches of snow tomorrow? Is that the forecast?
Eight inches. Depends who you listen to.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Press Sealight, Pojak.
The village of Glendale Heights invites the community to share your thoughts about biking and walking in Glendale Heights. We are proud to work with the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for planning to receive input from residents on Thursday, March 16th, from 5:00 p.m. to 6:45 p.m. in a Floyd Brown room in the village hall. It is important that our communities have streets that are safe, comfortable, and accessible for all users. Biking and walking have economic, environmental, social, and health benefits. Plus, they can always be fun ways to travel. By making our streets friendly for people walking or biking, our community members will have safer and more comfortable opportunities to bike and walk to school, work, parks, community centers, local businesses, and to family and friends in Glendale Heights. For more information, please visit www.glandalehighs.org or contact Assistant Village Engineer James Patton at jamespatton@glandalehighs.org.
Press Sealight, Schroeder, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Senior citizens aged 65 or better are encouraged to apply for the Senior Citizen Utility Tax Program rebate. Qualifying applicants will receive a $75 rebate check as part of this program if they meet the following guidelines, which are: Age 65 or better, honored before December 31st, 2022; or you have a spouse whose age is 65; you have lived in Glendale Heights for all of 2022 as either an owner or a renter; have earned no more than $45,000 of gross income during 2022; and have utility bills and pay for in their name. Applications are being accepted now through April 30th. If you have any questions, please contact the Center for Senior Citizens at 630-260-6050, or the Finance Department at 630-260-6000. Thank you.
You're welcome. A call for a public meeting on Thursday, March 16, 2023, at 5:00 p.m. to receive comment from the public regarding the village's bicycle and pedestrian path plan. Number three, proclamations. We have the following proclamation. A proclamation to proclaim the month of March as Poison Prevention Month. If there are no objections, I will sign this proclamation. State of the village. We now have a presentation to go over the state of the village report. Ms. Lewis.
On behalf of the village board of elected officials and the village of Glendale Heights, we are proud to present the 2022 State of the Village address as we highlight several key accomplishments over the past year. The village has great leadership with eight elected officials. Village President Chodre Ma Coker, Village Clerk Murray Schmidt, District One Trustee Bill Schmidt, District Two Trustee Mohammed Siddiqui, District Three Trustee Michael Light, District Four Trustee and Deputy Mayor Pat Meritato, District Five Trustee Chester Pojak, and District Six Trustee Mary Schroeder. Every year, the village of Glendale Heights accomplishes numerous projects, provides new programs and events, and offers new services to our residents. We are very proud of all of our accomplishments from year to year, but we wanted to take this time to really highlight some key and important items from 2022 as we look toward 2023 and the many years ahead. A full breakdown with additional details is available in the 2022 State of the Village address on the village website or in the March-April village newsletter. In reviewing the audited results of operations for the fiscal year 2022 and comparing them to the previous year, the value of total village assets increased 13% or $25 million, rising to $212 million from $187 million. Total revenues also grew from $57 million in the fiscal year 2021 to $60 million in the fiscal year 2022. This increase in revenue was in spite of the residual effects caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, supply chain issues, and rapidly increasing inflation. In fact, sales tax revenues, which fueled 23% of total general fund revenues in the fiscal year 2022, were once again up from the previous year. How did this happen? Thanks to steadfast efforts encouraging economic development and having a diverse mixture of sales tax generating businesses such as automobile dealerships, grocery stores, and big-box home improvement stores. Sales tax revenues have grown by more than 36% since the fiscal year 2015. Additionally, in the fiscal year 2022, the village's general fund finished the year with a fund balance position of $22.1 million, its highest mark in more than two decades, exceeding both the level recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, and the amount established by village policy. On August 31st, 2021, the village received the first of two installments of American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, or ARPA funds. The amount deposited was $2,285,018.24. The village board has pledged this money for water, sewer, and wastewater treatment plant infrastructure needs, which is one of the eligible uses for these funds. The second installment of funds was received this past August. Residents will be pleased to know that the 2022 village tax levy contained no increase from the prior year. Overall, the village's share of property taxes amounts to less than 11% of the total property tax burden. We are very proud of the Glendale Heights Police Department for maintaining the Commission on Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies, or CALEA accreditation. CALEA accreditation serves as the gold standard for public safety agencies. Our police department is one of approximately 800 law enforcement agencies throughout the country that has earned CALEA accreditation status. CALEA standards are rigorous, ensuring the department follows best practices in law enforcement. In October 2022, CALEA assessors performed a remote compliance review of the police department's standards. The police department met all CALEA mandated standards and was found to be in full compliance with all the CALEA requirements. This year, the police department deployed 10 Flock System license plate reader cameras throughout the community to detect and capture evidence, input hot alerts for investigative leads, and receive real-time alerts on vehicles related to criminal actions. Since the installation of these cameras, we have helped in over 115 investigative leads, both within Glendale Heights and other communities in the area. The police department is dedicated to its mission and working with the community to continue building relationships and trust. In 2022, the police department helped organize and participated in many programs and events for all ages to continue to build relationships throughout the community. Programs included Safety Town Classes, Junior Police Academy, Citizens Police Academy, Movies with a Cop, Neighborhood Watch, Charity Golf Classic, National Night Out, the Fishing Derby, and Heroes and Helpers. The police department also coordinated several fundraising campaigns, including the Polar Plunge, Cop on Top at our local Dunkin' Donuts, No Shave November, and Brittany's Trees. The police department increased the proactive initiative for mental health services through collaboration with Northeast DuPage Family and Youth Services to provide the highest quality of service for our residents. Northeast DuPage Family and Youth Services, NDFIS, continues to do co-responder, bi-weekly, in-person visits with officers along with a 25% increase in social service referrals. The police department welcomed Benjamin the Comfort Dog to our police family. Benjamin came to us from the LLC K-9 Police Ministry program to provide support for our community members. Benjamin works with the Glendale Heights community to bring comfort and calmness to those dealing with crises, trauma, tragedy, and any other difficult situations. The Community Development Department focuses on maintaining and improving property values within the village. Economic development continues to be a priority in the village. Increased economic development improves property values, increases the tax base through property tax and sales tax, lessens the tax burden on all property owners, and gives area residents more opportunities to shop and eat locally. The Community Development Department worked with several developers and businesses in 2022 to open new businesses and construct new developments. The village welcomed 55 new businesses in 2022 that occupied a combined area of approximately 870,095 square feet of existing vacant commercial, industrial, and office space. In 2022, the Community Development Department received 2,833 building permit applications for industrial, commercial, and residential construction. A vast majority of the building permits were for residents who were making improvements to their homes and increasing property values in their neighborhoods. Staff reviewed the permit applications and conducted inspections to verify that the work performed complied with national code standards ensuring safe structures. Staff responds to service requests from residents as well as identifies property that is not properly maintained and contacts owners to request that violations be addressed. Although a majority of property owners address violations, if not addressed, staff issues citations to require that the property be properly maintained. The village board continues to look at ways to improve the inspection process to work with both buyers and sellers of property in the village. In 2022, local road infrastructure was improved throughout the village as part of the in-house road program overlaying Blair Lane, Hickory Lane, Timber Lane, Asbury Drive, and John Street. The project involved the removal and replacement of deteriorated and structurally damaged curbs and sidewalks along with base repairs to the roadway before the new asphalt surface layer was applied. The village completed improvements to Klein Creek between Hesterman Drive and Mill Pond Drive. The village was awarded a storm water quality grant for approximately $648,000 from DuPage County Storm Water Management and Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, or IEPA, 319 grant to help cover construction costs for the project. This project removed the concrete channel in the creek and restored the natural stream function. This includes improvements to the groundwater infiltration, natural prairie, and riparian habitats on the creek banks along with water quality and the planting of 110 trees and shrubs. The Engineering Division provided contract supervision and construction observation for large road projects. One such project was the 2022 Motor Fuel Tax, or MFT, road program, which included the reconstruction of nine streets at a total cost of approximately $4.3 million. Streets that were improved this year were Coventry Circle, Greenbrier Drive, President Street, Arlington Lane, Lincoln Avenue, Cardinal Drive, Hesterman Drive, Charles Drive, and Devon Avenue. Capital improvements continue at the wastewater treatment plant with the rehabilitation of digester number two, which began in August of 2021. One aspect of this project included the rehabilitation of the sludge conveyance system with the addition of a new sludge pump and screw conveyor. This portion of the project is being funded by a Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, or DCEO, grant that the village received in 2019 for an amount of $350,000. The village's water infrastructure was improved in 2022 with the replacement of approximately 2,400 feet of water main on Glengarry Drive, Windsor Lane, and Chapman Court. This project was partially funded through a $400,000 DuPage County Community Development Block grant. Also completed this year was the installation of approximately 350 feet of six-inch water main on Second Place, east of Victoria Lane. The cost of these two infrastructure improvements to the village water distribution system was approximately $1 million. Over the last few years, the Fleet's Division has made changes to its heavy truck purchases. We are now purchasing Peterbilt trucks with stainless steel, salt spreaders, and dump bodies. These upgrades will allow the village to utilize these vehicles for at least 12 to 15 years with a longer life expectancy in the overall fleet. The Recreation Division offered over 40 new programs and trips this year, including esports leagues and open pickleball. Pickleball is one of America's fastest-growing sports. If you are interested in pickleball, courts are set up on weekday mornings at the Sports Hub, and an outdoor court has also been established at Nassos Park. The Recreation Division also helped to run 33 special events in 2022. We have a number of new ideas planned for 2023, including a summer concert and movie series. Make sure to check out the village newsletter for more information on all of the special events planned for Glendale Heights in 2023. After a two-year pause due to the COVID-19 pandemic, Glendale Heights Fest returned. We had one of our best years ever with a few positive changes to ensure the event was safe and fun for all attendees. Final carnival revenue figures for the entire five days of the 2022 Glendale Heights Fest, including ticket sales, wristband sales, Megapass sales, and Fastpass sales, totaled $416,795, or roughly $26,000 greater than in 2019. On July 21st, 2022, the grand reopening of Camera Park took place with the residents having the opportunity to check out the new playground area, fitness equipment, challenge course, educational components, disc golf, and lighting. A month later, the complete park opened when the splash pad was turned on. The splash pad remained open through September for kids to cool down and enjoy the many water features. A number of projects and purchases were completed this year at the Glendale Lakes Golf Club. Bunker renovations were completed on Holes 7 and 17 and the fairway bunker separating Holes 1 and 9. The biggest purchase of the year was for 77 new golf carts that are to be delivered in time for the 2023 golf season. The Center for Senior Citizens offers comprehensive senior citizen resources with the goal of serving the needs of senior citizens. The Center for Senior Citizens received 7,550 member visits in 2022. This was more than double the member visits in 2021. We saw many amazing accomplishments throughout 2022, and we look forward to what 2023 and beyond have in store for the village of Glendale Heights. We encourage everyone to get involved in the community so that we can work together. The village offers a variety of volunteer opportunities and committee and commission positions along with seasonal, part-time, and full-time employment opportunities throughout the year. We encourage you to visit our website to learn about these opportunities or contact the village to find out how you can get involved. Residents are invited to join the village board on the first Saturday of each month for coffee and chat with the village president and board at the Center for Senior Citizens. If you cannot attend our coffee and chats, please do not hesitate to contact your district trustee if you have any comments, questions, or concerns regarding the village. We look forward to continued growth in 2023 and the many years ahead.
We go on to public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board? Please state your name and address.
Good evening. Christopher Epstein, Club Drive. Question I have, I don't know if this goes to Nicole or not. What amendments are being done on the personnel policy?
So, we have changes that we need to just formally place in our personnel policy. There are state mandates regarding the One Day and Seven Act. So it just kind of regulates at what point during the day do part-time employees generally get a lunch? Because our full-time employees lunches are already kind of regulated.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The other thing is, I want to offer condolences to the family of the Chicago PD officer that was killed in line of duty. My grandfather was a former Chicago PD officer that had retired, and I offer the condolences on behalf of my family and the village to that officer's family. Thank you.
Yes. Michael, you're supposed to introduce me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you. Ed Pope, Wayne Avenue.
Thank you. I wasn't going to ask, but since it came up in the State of the Village, I'm going to ask. So, and it's probably an easy question. It's probably to you, Doug, or Bill. But you said that revenues are up substantially, and you got the ARP grant. Then on New Business 5, 6, and 7, it says that the motion is to borrow funds from the Pollution Control Loan Program. So if your revenues are up so dramatically, why do we have to borrow money?
23% increase in revenues doesn't equal $15 million in projects, right? So we need $15 million in 13?
Well, there's a difference because the water and sewer is an enterprise fund as well.
So, but we need $15 million of revenue to finish the projects, to start and complete the projects that are needed at the treatment plant due to some infrastructure improvements and mandates by the state.
But I thought when you talked about that a few months ago, I think before Christmas, actually, that was like a four-year project.
It is. Longer?
No, no. The projects we're doing are approximately two years back-to-back. But they're in large cost projects that we have to take loans against to be able to construct them.
Well, yeah, 2.2 million is nowhere near 15, but I just, that was just a curiosity question because I didn't realize it was that much money. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? None? So we will proceed, you know. Concert agenda. You have the concert agenda before you. Mr. Flint, but acting village minister, Doug Flint, please read the concert agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of February 16th, 2023. Two, approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of February 16th, 2023. Three, approval of the count's payable listing March 2nd, 2023 in the amount of $1,223,059.34. Four, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of an agreement between the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois and Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for the furnishing of professional engineering services for the Armitage Creek reaches 13 and 14, topographic survey, and tree inventory project. Five, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of an agreement between the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois and Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for the furnishing of professional construction observation services for the North Avenue INI repairs project, Phase 2. Six, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of an agreement between the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois and Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for the furnishing of professional construction observation services for the West Fullerton Avenue water main replacement project. Seven, a resolution authorizing issuing Seven, a resolution authorizing issuance of a notice of award and the execution of a contract for the West Fullerton Avenue Water Main Replacement Project. Eight, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of an agreement between the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois and Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for the furnishing of professional construction observation services for the CDBG Norton Avenue and East Schubert Water Avenue Main Replacement Project. Nine, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and the execution of a contract for the Norton Avenue and East Schubert Avenue Water Main Replacement Project. Ten, a resolution authorizing the execution of a printing services agreement for the two thousand twenty-three Recreation Activity Guide for the Village of Glendale Heights. Eleven, a motion to approve pay request number sixteen, the Joseph J. Henderson and Son, Incorporated for the digester rehabilitation project in a total amount not to exceed two hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-six cents. Twelve is approval of consent items.
Is there a motion to approve the Concert Agenda? Trustee Schmidt?
I move we adopt the Consent Agenda as presented.
Trustee Light?
Second.
Yes. Our discussion. None. Our roll call vote, please.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Siddiqui?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Maritato?
Yes.
Pojek?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
The Concert Agenda is approved. Old business, there's none. New business?
Mayor, before we start new business, I would ask for a motion from the board to remove number seven from the agenda. Do we need a motion, Peter?
You don't need a motion.
Okay, so I just asked the...
Just remove it.
Remove it from the agenda. We'll bring it back, there's some paperwork needs to be updated.
Number one, a motion to waive first reading on new business item three to six. Is there a motion? Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business items three to six? Trustee Light?
So moved.
And trusty Schmidt?
Second.
Discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Siddiqui?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Maritato?
Yes.
Pojek?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business item three to six is approved. Number two, an ordinance to amend sub-paragraph three entitled Test Results of Paragraph D. entitled Maintenance Requirements of Section nine dash two A dash seven entitled Cross Connections, Control of Article A entitled Connection Requirements of Title Nine entitled Water and Sewer of the Municipal Code of Ordinances of the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI, Back Floor Testing Fee. First reading.
Let's wait.
Number three, an ordinance...
No, Mayor, we waived the reading. You're right, I'm sorry, my fault.
No, it's not waived.
Yes, you're right. Go ahead, Mayor, number three.
Number three, an ordinance approving amendments...
Don't we have a discussion for number two?
No, number two is just the first reading.
Oh, first reading, okay.
That was my mistake, it's first reading.
Number three, an ordinance approving amendments to the personal policy manual of the Village of Glendale Heights, request to waive first reading ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirteen. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirteen? Trustee Light?
So moved.
Trustee Siddiqui? Discussion.
I have a question.
Yes.
That personal policy manual of the Village of Glendale Heights, we just got information on it tonight. Am I the only one that just got it?
No.
Yes?
Every, yes, we were delayed with some back and forth with the attorneys on the language, and we didn't get it back from the attorney's office till today, and I presented it to everybody today on your desk.
Chester?
Mayor?
Yes.
Doug, was there an issue with it, with it, or why we have to amend it, or what?
It's a new state, it's a new law.
A new law?
That we have to put into our personnel policy. And we have to amend the personnel policy to the law.
Okay.
So alls we're doing is essentially citing the law into our personnel policy.
Thank you. Anybody else? None? Our roll call vote, please.
White?
Yes.
Maritato?
Yes.
Pojek?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Siddiqui?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirteen is approved. Number four, an ordinance to authorize the renewal of an entertainment permit for live entertainment for Bright Lights Theater INC. located at thirty-five dash fifty-one East North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI, Bright Lights Theater Incorporated, request to waive first reading ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fourteen. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fourteen? I need a motion for that. Trustee Pojek?
So moved.
Trustee Schmidt? None. Roll call vote, please.
Maritato?
Yes.
Pojek?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Siddiqui?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fourteen is approved. Number five, an ordinance authorizing the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, LNI, to borrow funds from the Water Pollution Control Loan Program and repealing Village of Glendale Heights ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-nine, project number one, phosphorus reduction upgrade project, request to waive first reading ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifteen. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifteen? Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second. Trustee Light?
Second.
Discussion.
Do you know what? I have to tell you, many, many years ago, when Cameron was our mayor, he took money from the water fund, and that money was never replaced, to my knowledge. I have a problem when we take money from another project. And like Ed Pope said, if we're doing so well, why are we, why are we taking money?
Because now we have Mr. Pauling here. That's the reason.
I do.
If I'm okay with that.
Am I the only one that remembers this, when President Cameron took money from the Water Department? I remember coming up here, and I was not on the board, of course, this is many, many years ago, and I said, "You can't take money from any department that you want," and he said, "Oh, yes, I can." And I never remember that money being replaced. And I don't want this to happen to this project either. I mean, are we giving, are we paying interest to the loan, to this water pollution control loan program? Are we paying interest to them for borrowing the money?
We, we have secured a low-interest, one point two five percent loan for the money to complete the phosphorus project. The phosphorus project was engineer estimated cost last year at nine million dollars, roughly. It came in at twelve million dollars. The phosphorus project is a state mandate that we reduce the phosphorus levels from our wastewater treatment plant, and the only way to do that is through the construction of new processes to reduce the phosphorus. That, that cost is really expensive. It's a mandate by the state, has to be completed by a certain date, that's not actually that too distant in the future, and we have to get this project completed. The only way we can complete this project is with a low-interest loan from the IEP.
And this money will be replaced?
Well, we have to repay the loan, but it's, it's money that we're getting from the IEP to pay for the project, and we have a twenty-year repayment of that loan back to the IEP. But it's a one point two five percent loan, so it's very low cost to us.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
If, if we don't do this by the length of time that we have, we get penalized every day until that job is completed by the EPA. Right?
Yeah, the phosphorus has got to be online in twenty twenty-four, so we need to start moving with it.
Right, so we have to, we have to get, we gotta get moving on it. So we gotta, we gotta wait a what, one percent loan? So, I mean, we have to do it.
You said by the year twenty thousand twenty-four?
The end of twenty-four.
At the end?
Yes.
Did you talk November, December, or what?
Yeah, probably the end.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Our roll call vote, please.
Schroder?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Siddiqui?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Maritato?
Yes.
Pojek?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifteen is approved. Number six, an ordinance authorizing the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, LNI, to borrow funds from the Water Pollution Control Loan Program, project number two, UV disinfection project, request to waive first reading, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixteen. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixteen? Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Trustee Light?
Second.
Discussion. Trustee Light?
How do we end up at this juncture with the UV? I know this came to the board a while back with all the UV stuff. Didn't we have this funded, or at least figured out at that point in time?
I'm going to defer on the...
Alan, answer that, trusty light. This is to chlorinate, it's to disinfect the waste that's going into the creek, and right now we use liquid chlorine, and it's, it's not really effective as it should be. And we're sort of borderline with it. There's been a few times where it's been borderline, where we've been discharging into the creek. Most municipalities now have moved over to UV. We're one of the very few that aren't, and this is the project planned in the next two years to treat the waste going into the creek with UV.
I know we discussed this before, the UV...
It's not, it's not been up to the board before, the using disinfection to UV.
Because, well, maybe it was something else, but I know we had discussed UV because of the gentleman who's here for it, maybe I'm dreaming, but I remember...
I've never presented anything about UV with disinfection.
That might have been part of the master plan that we had a discussion on.
Okay, because I remember a discussion about the UV, the tanks, and the purification part of it. I, maybe we weren't moving forward on it at that point in time. Okay.
Trustee Siddiqui?
You mentioned chlorine. Do we keep the record of, like, how much chlorine we are putting in?
Yes, we do, yeah.
And back to, like, how many years?
Oh, well, we, we have to register it with the IEP every month, so they've got the records too, and I would imagine they go on for years. Scott Trotter is actually here, who's the expert on wastewater. Do you know that answer, Scott?
As far as the maintenance of the records by the state...
Excuse me, can you come up to the podium, please?
Excuse me, my name is Scott Trotter of Trotter and Associates. With respect to the records of the state for the, from the DMRs, their records are essentially permanent. They will have those records almost eternal, so they're, they're not like seven years or anything like that. I can obtain records from probably seventies or eighties.
So let's say if someone from EPA comes to us, or God forbid, if something happens, like how much chlorine we are putting in, or all those, do we have a record of all those things which we can back?
We don't, we very carefully monitor what we're putting in on the waste, and we test and we test it, we sample it, so we know what's going on every day. So we have all the records, and we know how much chlorine we're adding.
Sure, we chlorinate and de-chlorinate as well, because we have a limit on the amount of chlorine that we can put in. The issue at hand is the effectiveness of the chlorine, and that the UV will be more effective and more, more reliable.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? None. Roll call vote, please.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Siddiqui?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Maritato?
Yes.
Pojek?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixteen is approved. Seven, per acting village...
We skipped number seven, Mayor.
Oh, okay, got it. Eight, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a contingent notice of award for the wastewater treatment plant phosphorus removal upgrade project RES twenty twenty-three dash R dash nineteen. Is there a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash R dash nineteen?
Thank you.
I need a motion for that. Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Trustee Pojek?
Second.
Discussion. Yes.
Doug, does the removal of item seven affect item eight at all?
No. Anybody else? Roll call vote, please.
Siddiqui?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Maritato?
Yes.
Pojek?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash R dash nineteen is approved.
Excuse me, before we adjourn, what happened to ordinance twenty twenty-three dash? Everbank? It's a resolution. Sorry.
Yeah, it's a resolution, yes.
Thank you. We jumped numbers. Sorry.
Gee, public discussion of agenda items. We now go on to public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda items only? There's none. Is there a motion to adjourn? Trustee Light?
Motion to adjourn.
Trustee Schmidt? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Maritato?
Yes.
Pojek?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Siddiqui?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Maritato, you have the committee of the whole meeting.
I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting Thursday, February second, two thousand twenty-three. Marie, can you know who's present?
No, then.
Okay, before we get this meeting started, Marie, you got...
Yes, I have a couple of things that, first of all, everyone, watch your emails, statements of economic interest are going to start going out via email. It is still a May first deadline, as far as I know, and we will not be responsible, you will be personally responsible for any late fees, because they will give you enough time to get that done. So just keep watching for it. Secondly, we have the indemnification, which would protect, protect board members, elected officials, from not being covered by the village, and if you've been threatened with a lawsuit, you know what I'm talking about. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of background. We did bring this up on April seventh, two thousand twenty-two, at the committee of the whole meeting. The attorneys were directed to prepare an ordinance for that, and it was removed from the agenda on the twenty-first of April. So we did not vote on it last year, and that's why that's back. And the last thing I have is, I did send out an email to our staff, reminding them, and this is a perfect night for it, that we need to update the... that we need to update the village record destruction and retention files. And there are several departments who have never provided a list to my office. This has been ongoing for two years, and I still have not received requests. I have received emails from those of you who took the time to respond. Thank you for that. Um, and I expect to get a list of any additions you need to this, because some of our departments aren't even on the records list. And as it was noted tonight, there are records that have to be maintained. And there are some that need to be destroyed throughout the village. It is not a good idea to keep things that we don't need, because it presents a problem when there is a FOIA filed. So please get your information to my office. I gave you a deadline, and somehow I think there's several of you who will not need it. Thank you.
Is that, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, is there any add-ons?
Yes.
Uh, Mike?
Uh, employees.
A what?
Employees.
Chester?
Uh, grants.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
I have something that includes, uh, concerns employees, and I don't know if it's the same thing that Mike is thinking of, so.
Well, I'll put you down. You got something?
Uh, yes, on indemnity, uh, class, you know. I want to speak on this.
You want to speak on what?
Indemnity. When we get to item number.
When we get to, when we get to, when we get to it, then you can speak. Okay, let's see, where we at? Okay, anybody have any public comment? Uh, stepped up to the podium, your name and your address?
Jamie Deali, 127 Manchester Bloomingdale. I was here previously, uh, I'm just a squeaky wheel. I want to continue to have the board, uh, their mind on James Court Townhomes. So just a reminder, uh, those townhomes were built in 1962, Sydney Anzac Builders. It was, uh, it's, the location is North Avenue in Glen Allen. In 62, there was an alley, when it was originally built, uh, between the bowling, uh, the commercial properties, the bowling alley, and the townhomes. Starting around 81, Mr. Reskin started complaining to townhome people, we're making a mess, so he wanted a fence built. In 89, a fence was built. The village granted a six-foot fence, an eight-foot fence is there now. Reason I'm here is that from 89, there's been a problem with parking. I don't know, probably you guys don't hear complaints too much about it, but I want to be a squeaky wheel. Last summer, I got a estimate to put some driveways in the front, which we've had discussions, Mr. Flinton, the mayor, we've had, uh, you know, we can put driveways in the front, it's grass right now. Came out to about 10,000 per unit, 40 units, 400,000, it's not going to happen. So basically, why I'm here is to see, uh, if, if it's any possibility to go back to how it was without the fence. And I would like trustees, uh, I'm not exactly sure, I know the district's moved a little bit. I'm not exactly sure the trustees, but, um, if, reach out to the business there and see any possibility to get the fence taken down. Because 400,000 isn't going to happen. And the benefit there, you got a husband and wife per unit times 40, and one, at least one kid there, 100 people can get a benefit. Another thing that's, um, associated with something else that's been talked about a lot is cricket. Um, the, Mr. Flint had a nice presentation almost a year ago, I want to say, talking about the costs. It's like, per year, 10,000, whatever, 5,000. You know, people enjoy, it's fine to pay, if people can enjoy, they're enjoying it. But this, people are living here, they can get some parking, you can barely fit two cars, it's a one huge space.
This is the fence between the lot and the plaza?
Yeah, to behind. So back in the old days, so in the eighties, they were suggesting that the village, I don't know the word for it, but the village take over that land. And then the cost started going up, and Mr. Reskin wanted the residents to pay half. It started out at 20, it went up to 80. It's not reasonable to ask the residents to pay for half when his trucks are gone messing up the concrete back there. So just a, just a squeaky wheel. Just think about it, if anybody can talk to the business, see maybe we can give a little cash, or if the village can consider taking over how the discussions were happening in, back in the eighties, that's all.
Doug, do you know any, do you know anything about that back, back then, why that fence was put up, or? I mean, that's, I, I have no idea.
I have a great story about that fence, but I have no idea about your question.
I have no idea.
I, I have no idea why that fence was, it is an eight-foot fence, it might even be a 10-foot fence now, but, uh, I have no idea on the history of the fence. And it's the, do you guys know what fence you're talking about? I know Bill does. But it's a fence between Glendale Plaza and it separates the back parking of James Court. So it does, does create some issues trying to back in and back out, especially during snow events and other events. I do not know the history of that fence.
Is that by, is that by the Chevy dealer?
No, it's back behind Bolero.
Oh, okay, okay.
Sir, do you have property there? You live in Bloomingdale, do you have property there? You do?
I, yeah, I do. I lived there a couple of years, and fixed it up and rented it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Could we take a look in it, take a look in it and see what, uh?
Yeah, I'm actually.
See what we could do, or?
Getting a picture right now.
See what the problem is?
And I'll talk to Mike and update Mike on what it is and see if there's anything we can do.
Okay, sounds good. Ed?
Peter, maybe you could answer this question. I know COW is really about comment, but I just want a clarification on something, if you could?
Sure.
On the indemnification, since there's another lawsuit out now, can elected officials be sued as an individual, or are you always an elected official?
Well, you can be sued either way, but the allegations depends on your capacity of how you were acting.
But how does that affect the village in terms of who has to pay for it?
Well, if, if somebody was acting in their official capacity as either employee or an elected official, it's contemplated they would be covered. They have to be acting in their, in their official capacity.
So we've already spent a small fortune on lawsuits, now we have another lawsuit in the works, and the village will have to pay for it?
As of now, that, that's the issue. That's what they're going to be discussing.
Oh, okay. Well, just because I was wondering, are you a person or are you an elected official? Is there a differentiation in the lawsuits?
Well, legally, you could be named in your official capacity as a whatever, or as an individual.
But it wouldn't matter in terms of who has to pay for it currently? So this would be part of tonight's topic?
It's, it's part of tonight's topic.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Ed. Anybody else? Okay, being no one, we'll move on. We have, uh, committee recommendations. There are none. Now we go to a discussion regarding indemnification ordinance for elected officials, continue from May 5th, 2022.
So as a segue from Mr. Pope, you have, I printed for everybody, uh, our village attorney, Peter Paciolo and I went back and forth on a draft ordinance on indemnification of elected officials and employees. Peter competed, completed this early this afternoon, and I presented to the board when I got it. We're up for discussion to talk about, um, the policy, the ordinance. It's up for, you know, trying to determine if it's appropriate, when it's appropriate, how it's appropriate. So we can have a discussion tonight, we can give you time to review it for, for a week, and send me emails or have conversations about it over the course of the next two weeks. And I can work with Peter on other ordinances, on changing, updating the ordinance as anybody sees fit. But it's a, uh, ordinance that, uh, indemnifies employees and elected officials kind of until proven that you're not an employer or elected official. It, it's, it essentially says that, uh, if you are subject to a suit, we're going to cover you until proven otherwise. So. It's, it's indemnity regarding the damages, but also provides for legal defense. Yes, it does not cover criminal acts. It does not cover punitive damages placed against somebody. Does not cover, uh, non-employees or non-elected officials, right? This is separate also from all the union contracts and all the other policies that we have regarding indemnity, because all of our union contracts have indemnity, this is in addition to that. And really for people, employees that aren't, uh, part of a union and aren't covered by any other, uh, policy regarding indemnification, which includes department heads who really aren't covered under policy. So, uh, it, it's up for your review, it's up for discussion tonight, it's up for discussion for the next 10 days. And we can bring something back to the board in two weeks on, uh, a proposed ordinance.
Doug?
Yes, sir.
We just got this today, when I walked in at 7 o'clock.
Right.
I would have, I'd love to have some time to review this.
Of course.
So I, I postponed it till the next board meeting or whatever.
Uh, no, he's not saying postpone it, he's saying that's, give him the, your, so he can bring it in the next board meeting.
Yeah, yeah, give me, yeah, give me, give me some.
All up, guys, one at a time, one at a time.
Give me some feedback throughout the next 10 days.
All right, you'll get it.
Yeah, okay. Sure, I will.
You have something to say, Mike? Do you have your hand up, Mike?
No, the mayor.
I was.
Oh, mayor?
I'm good.
Yes, uh, in this language, I want to add, you know, that any employee or any elected official should not be compensated or indemnify on behalf of the resident because of his or her, number one, tortious act, willful act, intentional act. It should be added into this.
So essentially, willful and wanton conduct?
Willful, um, tortious act, intentional act, and to any act that is promoting self-agenda or relatives' agenda, you know. It should not be covered, it should not be burden on residents, you know. He or she, anybody who's doing some act intentionally harming others, should not be compensated by village residents, you know. Over here, second is the person defendant who is, who is committing, he should not be hire attorney by himself, you know. There should be some better wording sentence that he cannot promote, you know, a business of his or her attorney, you know.
What, 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 Ed?
It's.
I, you lost me.
I, I may have to address some of those issues, just for clarification.
What is, what is his definition?
Well, what the mayor is proposing is that intentional torts not be covered for, I think, defense, providing a defense and for, uh, paying any damages. Now, I'm assuming everybody doesn't know, so I'm going to go through them. The intent, there's, there are a list of intentional torts. And there's a lot of torts, but these are the ones that have willfulness behind them, or alleged to have willfulness behind them. It's assault, battery, fraud, infliction of emotional distress, defamation, which includes both libel and slander, invasion of privacy, false imprisonment, conversion, trespass, sexual abuse, and wrongful death. Those are basically the most common intentional torts. So right now, under the proposed ordinance, and I know we're not deciding anything today, but just so you have a frame of reference, a legal defense would be provided in such instances. Um, but under intentional torts, you're allowed also to have not just regular damages, but punitive damages. Under the proposed ordinance, you would get a defense, but if you were found to be liable, the village would not, um, indemnify any employer or elected official for punitive damages if they were awarded. So just to explain that part of it, so. And, and I don't know that, um, anybody would ever know if something meets one of those torts until it gets. Adjudicated. That's right. And I, I think as a village, we have a duty to represent employees and elected officials until told otherwise by a neutral party that says, no, this, this is an intentional tort, and you don't have coverage. Right? Or they would tell, they would say that it's an intentional tort of some sort, and the board would then say you don't have coverage. Well, the way it's, the way it's proposed right now is those would be covered as a tort, not as a crime. A lot of these could be also crimes, the, the village would not cover a defense or indemnity. But they, if, if there was a judgment just for regular damages, the village would indemnify as written. If there were punitives, which punitives are to punish, the village would not cover those. Right? So, you know, battery is a crime, but it's also a tort. But we can't, um, we can't make a determination on coverage until the case is essentially adjudicated. Correct, well, first, if, if you're actually responsible, correct.
Okay, I, I got a question. What if I, uh, I told Mike White something about his family? He don't like it, and he turns around and sues me. Who defends me?
Well, under your scenario, there's also provision for conflicts. So obviously, if it's two individuals who are a member of the same organization as the village, there's a conflict. You can't represent both sides equally and fairly, under the law, ethically or legally. So that, that's where there's a provision that if there is a conflict, you can hire your own lawyer, and the village would take on the expense of that hiring for reasonable fees and all that, it has to be reasonable. Uh, but that's the reason is because if there's two on the same organization.
Okay, let me ask you another question, then.
So one would be provided under one, and the other get their own.
Let me ask you another question.
Yes.
The mayor is covered no matter what, right? No matter, if he sues anybody, he's covered, right?
No. No, as written right now, no elected officials are covered. There is a provision for indemnification only, not a defense, under the current code for employees. Uh, but there are, there are exceptions, because there's insurance. So if the village is a party or somehow a member of the village, insurance can kick in, and that's excluded from here, too. If there's insurance, the village doesn't have to do anything or pay anybody. The other side of that. Insurance is primary. The village will never cover. I'll, I guess I won't say never. Most likely will never, most likely won't cover the person who's, the plaintiff. Right? If, if you decide to sue me, we're not covering you, we're covering me. Right? Because you're the plaintiff, you're going to have your own attorney, or you're going to do it on your own, but you're bringing action against me. The village would never cover the person bringing the action, the per, the village would cover the defendant if so needed. Which there could be cross-claims. Sure, but we, we wouldn't, the village wouldn't cover the plaintiff, the village would cover the defendant. Correct.
Another thing is when a defendant is sued individually and is not village business, then village should not, uh, provide legal defense, you know.
Correct, it is for official, official, your, your duties.
Yeah, like, you know, supposing I am here, I go home, then I go on some street, and I talk about, you know, Mr. Flint, you know, he's like that, I'm, just example, don't take it personally.
Nothing's personal.
That is my individual capacity, you know. Village should not be providing defense in that case, you know. That is equivalent to tortious or intentional or, I'm sorry, willful act, you know.
I, I think, I think, I understand that. I think it goes back to Mr. Pope's question before of how do you differentiate your title? Right? And when does that, when does the elected official end, and when do you become the private citizen again? And I think that's the part that is hard for us to determine. And I think that's where the, a neutral magistrate has to.
No, 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 we can, definitely we can address this issue, you know.
Are, are we, are we not elected officials 24 hours a day?
What? There's a difference...
I don't know how to answer that question, because there, yes, you could be, right? But there also might be instances where you're not. And, you know, it's like law enforcement. Police officers are police officers twenty-four seven. Until they don't wanna be a police officer twenty-four seven and they wanna be a witness, right? So, I, I, I don't know how to answer that question, other than to say that you could be. And I, I think it's a determination on a case-by-case basis.
It's very fact-specific.
And, and I think that determination needs, you know, a objective magistrate or mediator to make that determination on whether you're an elected official today or a private citizen, whatever that context is. Right? Because I think, you know, Saturday afternoon, if, if you're out talking to people, you know, you're an elected official. If you're getting a cup of coffee and they ask you questions about uh, what's going on in the community, you're an elected official, right? So I don't, I don't know that you can only be an elected official during the times of board meetings or meetings, right? Because, you know, how many times you've been stopped in a store to ask questions about anything in the village, right? You're acting in your capacity as an elected official at that point. So I don't know how you separate that. I don't know when you answer questions, how you separate a private citizen from an elected official, right? I know that when a police officer, they're never separated. When somebody asks them a question, it's gospel regardless of whether you're on duty or off duty. I think the same is true for elected officials. If somebody's asking you a question about something going on in the village, I don't know how you turn that, I don't know how you separate that. And I don't know that... I think, I think it'll only, an objective adjudicator or mediator is that person to make that determination if you're, uh, acting in your capacity. You're not acting in your capacity.
If I could add, Doug, as written, the ordinance kind of, kind of contemplates that scenario. Um, so it doesn't matter whether you're named as a defendant individually or as a, as a, an official or employee. It's the facts that matter, and under those facts, if you were acting in your duty, the village would provide legal defense and indemnification. But there is a provision for a review. So as the facts are flushed out and it maybe becomes apparent that it wasn't done under your official duties or as part of your employment, the village could reevaluate and determine whether or not it would want to proceed with providing a legal defense or indemnity.
I have a quick question. Uh, Doug, so just to, so that this whole thing doesn't become someone's wish list, how are you going to proceed? Like, uh, what will be your plan?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna take everybody's ideas.
Yeah.
And Peter is going to add them into the ordinance. And we're gonna bring in, in another draft ordinance back to the board for, for approval. And the board can determine what should be in that ordinance. There may be no changes that anybody wants. Or there, or there might be, right? So, um, this is a, a decision made by the board on an ordinance. And the, and the board should vet the ordinance to make it fit the board.
Yes, so the board, um, what I really like is, um, you know, if we have our draft before the next board meeting, which we can look into that.
Yes.
And then, you know...
Yes, I would, I would, you know, if there's any feedback in the next, you know, seven to ten days, I can get it to Peter and we can get something back to you, you know, Tuesday before the next board meeting, uh, that would be great.
Yeah, but my question is, Mr. ABC said, oh, I want to add this. Are you going to add that or you are, because if it's, doesn't make sense?
Well, I think we have a duty to add language that people are requesting, and I think the board has the duty to tell us what they wanna see in the ordinance.
Okay.
Right?
What we want there, what we don't want there.
Yeah, I mean, but I can't, it, it's not, it, it's not ethical to, to exclude one over the other, right? This isn't, this is your ordinance. This is a ordinance that we're bringing to, uh, benefit the board.
Yeah, I, I just want it to be fair for everybody.
Sure.
Yeah, it should be fair and other...
Not just one person. Fair for everybody.
Right.
And now, another thing is that these elected officials, they should take responsibility and control their mouth, you know. It's not that, you know, they have indemnity and they are after other people, you know.
And that applies to the village president as well.
All the way around.
Yeah.
If I could just, if we're gonna do this by email, I just have to caution one person to one person. Um, or else we're gonna be in violation of the open meeting act.
Just send everything to me.
Yeah, so one, one trustee to Doug, one trustee to Doug, not between the trustees.
Or set up a time, if I'm around, and come in and talk, and we can have a conversation about what you want to have in there.
That'll be better.
Yeah, well, I'm good, whatever you guys decide.
Bill?
We'll talk.
Peter, could you send me a list of those torts that you had described before?
I will. I will. I'll send them to everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
What else? Mary, you got something?
No, I just wanted to say this. I, we keep talking about an ordinance, but you know what? We haven't had an ordinance meeting in a long time. And there are other issues that, uh, I'm concerned about for the residents. Not only this. And I feel that we need an ordinance meeting just about the other things that we're concerned about, because this one's gonna take a couple more weeks. But in the meantime, residents have asked me why we haven't had an ordinance meeting. And first of all, I've even, the only ones that always come to our ordinance meeting is the village administrator, the police chief, myself. And, uh, Mike White is also on, and I asked him if he would mind terribly if we had a day meeting, and he said he had no problem with that.
Yeah.
But we do need another trustee on this, and, uh...
I was just waiting, Mary, till after the election.
Mary?
I'm sorry.
Bill?
But that's in April. This is, we've been prolonging this. I told you...
We're one month away.
Mary?
Well, I told you in December that I want an ordinance meeting, and now this is March, and we still haven't had this ordinance meeting.
Right, and we couldn't come up with a date, and then we got to February.
Hold on, Bill. Hold on. Mary, I'm on the ordinance committee.
Bill is.
You are?
Yes.
Bill, thank you. I'm glad you are. All right?
Yep.
But I, I don't mean to discuss what we're discussing now. We have other issues that are important to the residents, and I felt like we could have an ordinance meeting regarding that. We could have the ordinance meeting regarding this in another month.
Okay.
Am, am I making sense or no? Does no...
Do you want a meeting before...
I'd like an ordinance meeting, uh, actually, I'd like it, um, on the fourteenth of March, if that's all right, uh, with, uh, Bill and you and the chief. It's on a Tuesday in the afternoon. I can, twelve, one o'clock is...
Okay.
Do you have a problem with that, Bill? Bill?
On the fourteenth?
He's checking his calendar.
He's looking at his calendar.
Oh, okay. Oh, all right. All right, very good. Thank you. I appreciate you.
I just need a copy of all the stuff before the meeting.
Definitely, Mike. I will not leave you out. I promise.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Doug, are we referring this, this to the ordinance committee as well?
No.
Okay. No, there's a laundry list of other items.
Okay, we all set? Anybody else? No? Being none? Okay, we'll move on to, uh, other discussions, like employees.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a, a minute. I know my feelings are probably the same as the board's. I just wanted to take a moment to thank all of the village employees. Um, sometimes we overlook the backbone of this village, and it's the employees. They do all the hard work. They take care of everything that we need. And I just wanted to say thank you to each and every one of them because we couldn't do it without you. That's all I wanted to say.
Amen.
That was not what I wanted to say.
Say what you wanted to say?
No.
Oh, okay, okay. I got you on there.
I did, oh, what you say, though. I, I think the, the employees do a very, very good job, and this is why I'm concerned about this. What I have, what I have heard, and, uh, I'd like to verify whether...
You're saying, are you, are you giving me, are you giving me the time now, or...
Can, can I have my time now?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, if I'm wrong, I'd like to be corrected. But what I'm having a problem with is that, uh, the department that does the cutting of the grass, that's your department, is it not, Rachel, that does the cut? Oh, it's yours? I'm sorry. All right. What I'm saying is, do we now have outsiders doing the cutting of our grass? Or are we having only our employees? Is this an in-house job, or do we have outside help?
So as of last year or in years past, we have had a mix. We've had outside contractors and staff.
Do we not have enough employees? Why do we have outside people cutting our grass?
We've had outside people cutting our grass for, uh, I'm gonna say, four years. Um, and it's, the answer to your question is I don't have enough employees to cut everything that's out there.
Wouldn't it be cheaper for us to have an employee than to have outside help? First of all, we have to be concerned about the present employees that we have. Are they, there's not enough employees to do the cutting of the grass?
Uh, there is not currently, our department is down a number of employees from its peak. And so that was done to, um, offset the workload that is no longer able to be done by our staff.
What, what, what I'm gonna say, Mary, is...
What? Tell me.
We, we had outside people cutting our grass for a while. Privatized some of our stuff. But we are not privatizing anything else. Everything else in, in-house, we are cutting. We are not privatizing anything. As far as, as far as the board is concerned, whatever, whatever we cut last year, we gave the contractor, that's what he's cutting now. Anything else, we are not cutting. We're not privatizing anything. I wanna make that clear. The board says, no, we are not doing it.
What about, uh, North Avenue and then, uh, the islands on Army Trail Road? That's what they're doing.
The stuff that was already done, so there's a number of different things.
Our parks and the local, we're, our guys are doing it a hundred percent.
As of right now, they are.
Let's keep it that way.
So, last year, last couple of years, outside company cut the complex.
Why?
Outside contractor cut the complex. All the, huh?
Why?
Because of manpower and how big the complex is and, and honestly, how difficult it is to cut and maintain.
I thought we hired summer help to do this.
We're not getting any summer help to come and work. Uh, last year, we had two.
That's it?
Uh, yeah, for seasonal labors, we had two in parks.
Last year, we had contractors do the complex, North Avenue. And what else did we give them last year?
They did...
Couple other parks or something?
No.
Or not parks?
We have a number of different properties throughout the village that are little one-off pieces of property, so they did those as well. Uh, North Avenue, Medians, um, and County Roads.
Right. That's what they've been doing for life.
Reimbursed for those.
That's what they've been doing for the last three or four years. Everything else, we are, we are in-house.
About approximately, how many employees do you have doing this kind of work?
I currently...
I'm not, you know, ballpark...
Budgeted, I have eight.
Eight?
Ten years ago, I had fifteen.
Have you lost, you lost one? Didn't you just lose one recently?
I have budgeted eight. I have seven currently in my organization, in my group.
I always thought we had more than that.
Nope.
Nope.
Well, I just don't want any of our employees get laid off because it is...
That's never the intent.
Never.
No, no.
I just wanna verify it.
No, no. The board is not gonna do anything. We are cutting in-house. We are not privatizing anything. They're just cutting what they've been cutting for the last two or three years. That's what they're on, continue to cut. Everything else, we are doing ourselves. And that's the consensus I got from the board. Am I right?
Correct.
Okay, so that's what, that's, that's what is gonna be happening. So whatever anybody's hearing or saying is, that is not true. And if we need help, you know what? We'll hire a couple of people. And if we can't hire a couple of people, you know what? What's that agency that you call and they send you people? What, what is it?
Oh, you mean like a temp agency?
Like a temp agency. Get, get on the phone, say, you know, I need a couple of guys. And, and, and let a couple of guys come. Maybe they'll, maybe they'll stay and stay the whole summer. Who knows? I don't know. I'm just saying. I, I, I'm done.
Do you wanna add to that, Mike?
I was just waiting for him to say, okay. Um, a quick question. Isn't North Avenue County or State Road?
So we do get reimbursements from a number of the different, through DuPage County. We have an agreement that you have passed that we provide the service, they pay us back.
Even money, or we make money on it?
It's even money. They bill us help.
We don't want our guys on our table anyway.
No.
Correct.
Not our guys.
No, not our guys. We don't want our guys on it. Not there. Okay, anybody else?
I think Chester is it.
Chester, great.
Chester, we, oh, I'm sorry, Chester, go ahead.
I have, uh, grants. This is, Keith, this is for you. This week in the Herald, they had a, a article in there about the state of Illinois. The mayor, I mean, the governor gave grants to a lot of DuPage residents, I mean, the communities. We were not mentioned one time, to my understanding, because we already had the grant for Camera Park. Am I correct in that?
So, the grants that were released yesterday are the OSLAD grants, which are open space land acquisition and development. They're the same grant that we have used for Reskin Park and we've used for Camera Park. And we have to apply for those grants. These grants were applied for last summer. They were released today. I think I mentioned at a meeting a couple, or a couple of meetings back that our intention is to go, this is a yearly grant. There are different amounts of money this year. I think he gave out sixty million?
Six hundred thousand per...
Yeah, six hundred thousand, but I think he gave sixty million dollars in this one. The last cycle was forty million dollars, I believe. So what he does, the government gives out these grants. And so our plan is to apply for one next year, this summer. Not next year, but this summer. And, um, talk, we talked about the Simons property, and that would be what we're doing. Actually, before the governor put out the grant on Tuesday, I had a conversation with Hitchcock Design Group to start that process, to make sure that we're eligible and what we needed to do to get that in place. Those grants will be put together. The grant cycle opened last year from August through September. We anticipate the same grant cycle, and so we'll be applying for the same thing as that is. So they're out there every year, but you also wanna, it's a six hundred thousand dollar matching grant. And we wanna make sure that we have a project that befits that. And so that's kinda why we're looking at the Simons property as our next one.
Make sure you keep track of that date so we don't miss it this year or next year.
Absolutely. There's, just so you know, there is a ton that goes with this grant. You have to have a, a number of different meetings and different things that go with it. So this is probably about a six-month process. That's why we're starting now to get that done.
All right, thank you, Keith.
Hey, Doug, let me ask you a question. Ain't, ain't, don't that have something to do with, uh, we're not a park district? We don't get that money?
No.
No, we can get that one.
We get that money. We've gotten the grant, I mean, that, that was Camera Park grant, right? The OSLAD grant. It's a match, right? So, we have to have the money, if we get, if we get a six hundred thousand dollar grant, we gotta match six hundred thousand.
Oh, I mean, I mean, the, uh, the article that was in today's paper in the Herald. All the, all the park district, they were getting all the money, handled the park, Addison.
Yeah, we're eligible.
And, is that because we're not a park district? Why we don't get some of the, uh, Pritchard's money?
No, 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 no. We, we, we got that same grant two years ago. Right? We didn't, you can't get the grant every year, and you gotta have projects that you can put the money towards that's ready to go.
That's how we got Camera Park.
Yes.
We didn't apply this year.
Yes, because...
So we weren't eligible because we didn't apply.
And we didn't have any projects that we could, you know, we got the senior center expansion going on. We have other projects going on. Uh, next year, we'll have the money for, uh, Simons' property.
Oh, okay, okay. Mohammed, I was wrong there when I told you today.
Yeah, okay. No, that's fine. I know.
All right. All right, thank you. Okay, what do we got? Okay, I think that is it. I need a, I need a motion to adjourn. Chester?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second by Mike White. Door call.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Siddiqui?
Yes.
Light?
Yes.